Good evening. The January 18th, 2022 legislative meeting of the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. As a reminder, masks must be worn in all county buildings. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. I'd like to begin this evening's invocation by reading a short prayer written by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it is, "Eternal God, out of whose mind this great cosmic universe arose, we bless you. Help us to seek that which is high, noble, and good. Help us in the moment of difficult decision. Help us to work with renewed vigor for a warless world, a better distribution of wealth, and a brotherhood or sisterhood that transcends race or color." And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty as our justice.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive 22 submissions of online testimony under the invitation to audience topic. That was shared with the council. It's been added to the record and a summary is posted to the website. There was also one letter that had been dropped off, personally dropped off in our Dropbox that has been shared with the entire council as well.
Thank you very much. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Will the following persons please come up to the table, take a seat, and state your name and address for the record? Amy Leahy, Don Pulliam, David Morseberger, and Michael Brown. Ms. Leahy, whenever you're ready, you may go.
Is this on?
Oh.
If you just slightly tap the button there, you can turn it on.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Amy Leahy. I live in Severn Park, Maryland. And what I would like to talk about tonight is the rudeness of county councilwoman Sarah Lacy during the meeting on Friday where the county council was deliberating the mask mandate. And I would like to point out that Mrs. Lacy was incredibly rude in flipping the bird, giving the finger to one of our people who were in testify, and I think that's incredibly rude. I think she should be held accountable, and that kind of thing should never, ever happen coming from an elected official in a public forum. Even in private, it's bad, but a public forum is for even worse.
Ms. Leahy, making personal defamatory or profane remarks is not appropriate during the council meeting.
I would like to remind this council that for years, people stood up every council meeting and blasted Councilman Peruca for his personal views. And so I am only saying the same thing that whoever is in this seat should be held accountable. I know. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Pulliam.
My testimony is regarding last week's emergency hearing on extending civil emergency powers and the mask mandate. I want to start off by thanking the council for following your constitute the constitutional process, where you, the legislative branch, held the emergency public session on two bills that were subsequently defeated, but the process was followed. However, the steps that were taken after the vote is the problem. We had a monumental collapse in our government operations. This is no longer about mask mandates. It's about the illegal operations of our government. We are further regressing to a government that is not for the people, by the people. It is now a government run by a single branch, the executive branch, that includes a health director that was not elected. To be told you have to follow a mandate when your elected body votes against it, it's government overreach that lacks accountability and reduces trust in government. When you lose trust in government, the community then turns to making its own decisions, which can lead to anarchy. And quite honestly, they are doing that. When you go in stores, people are following their own rules and making their own rules. This model of waiting for the courts to say no to an external case is cowardly and a derelict of your duty. Where does this go if you don't stop the executive branch? County executive mandated vaccines, vax passports? What I'm asking is that the council stand up for not only yourselves, but those you represent, but stand up and uphold and defend the oath that you took when you were sworn into the council. A solution does exist. Another solution exists aside from the external lawsuit or the one that's going on, and that lies within the Anaronda County Charter. Let's execute Article 4 of the county, on the county executive, Section 404, and look into conviction or failure to perform duties. Thank you very much.
Mr. Morseberger.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. David Morseberger, Davidsonville, Maryland. I am here to state my disgust at the tyrannical move of the county executive administration mandating mask mandates. This is about the county executive branch overstepping their legal bounds and outright ignoring the will of the legislative branch. This is a nonpartisan issue. This is way beyond mask mandates, as Don Pulliam said. At our fabric, we have a separation of powers documented in the county charter, the state constitution, and the U.S. Constitution that we must forever and continually fight for. Specifically, the county charter states in the preamble, "We, the people of Anaronda County, state of Maryland, in order to form a more orderly county government, establish separate legislative and executive branches." In Article 3, Section 306, legislative powers of the county council, the county council is the elected legislative body of the county and is vested with the lawmaking power. The county council did not approve the emergency session, the emergency ability to extend mask mandates in this state of civil emergency. Councilmen Lacy and Radman gave passionate speeches at the end, accepting the vote and pleading for people to still wear masks. I subsequently sent an email to each thanking them and congratulating them on a nice closing speech. Now is the time for the county council to act to protect their powers and our county. Each of you took an oath to uphold the county charter. I want to see the county charter demand and possibly sue in court the county executive to stay within their legal lanes by rescinding the mask mandate. There's an external case that's been submitted, but I really think that the solution is won from within the county. You must protect the fabric of our charter and our constitution. In a constitutional republic, the end does not justify the means, and we must, must maintain the separation of powers between our branches of government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morseberger. And finally, we have Michael Brown.
Thank you. Michael Brown, Glumburning, Maryland. I come before the council again this evening to talk about the Health Department's COVID-19 data. It has been identified that they are using population data from 2019, two years ago. Based on that data, the county case rate is two to three cases higher, according to them, than it really is. As of today, the case rate, according to the Health Department, is 106.3. It's really 104. I brought this up to you, to the council, the last council meeting. It continues to play out that they're using incorrect population data, and I think we can all agree that data transparency and correct data being presented to the public is paramount to people understanding the decisions that the government is taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Come on down. And please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live on Huntwood Drive in Gamberles. I'm here tonight to talk about highway right-of-way vegetation management. I noticed myself a great inconvenience the January 3rd storm that came in and caused a catastrophic failure of State Route, Maryland 450. I wish to compliment Anaronda County on anticipating dangerous tree falls, potentially fatal tree falls, on Johns Hopkins Road between the golf course and St. Stephen's Church Road. That was a really, really fine move. I also want to talk about encouraging the county to survey, perhaps along with utility companies, other potential tree falls, whether power lines on county right-of-way. And also, the county council to look at amending code to account for vegetation management along rights-of-way on the county roads where there are power lines. And we've dodged a bullet for three winter seasons. The chickens can come home to roost this season, and I think this is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Puske.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. Actually, the reason why Johns Hopkins got done was because of me. I reached out to BG&E by several citizens. But I think this is a good public service announcement. You can contact BG&E at their 1-800 number if you have concerns over lines. They will send out their survey as well. Obviously, the county can do it too. But I did want to let you know that if you call the 1-800 BG&E number, they will follow up with you in terms of streets and concerns. So again, not that government could also help, but if individuals see a concern, that's how that came. I reached out to Mr. Wright, who's the representative, and we got that trimmed prior to the storm. So I appreciate, you know, you mentioning that, but there's probably other areas in all of our districts. So as far as that, you know, contacting, that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. All right. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
Second.
Councilman Puske, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of January 3rd and January 7th, 2022.
Minutes of January 3rd, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 6:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
May I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, there's more.
Yes, sorry, one more meeting. Minutes of January 7th, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Radveen at 8:00 a.m., and Ms. Hare opened with the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3rd and January 7th, 2022?
Motion to approve the minutes. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of January 3rd and January 7th, 2022, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 822, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, 2022 Green Infrastructure Master Plan. Bill Number 922, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Benefits, Holidays, Juneteenth. Bill Number 1022, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Private Disposition of County-Owned Properties Being Part of Old Admiral Court in Annapolis, Maryland. Bill Number 1122, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education Supplementary Appropriation. Bill Number 1222, An Ordnance Concerning Capital Budget and Program, Board of Education, Security-Related Upgrades and Maintenance Backlog, Capital Projects, Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 1322, An Ordnance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Personal Property Tax Credits and Exemptions, Reduction in Assessment, Qualified Data Center, Personal Property. Bill Number 1422, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Distribution of Literature to Purchasers of Guns or Ammunition, Violations. Bill Number 1522, An Ordnance Concerning Redistricting for the Purpose of Revising Council-Mannick Districts.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
There are no resolutions to be introduced this evening, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 99-21 as amended.
Bill Number 9921, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development Exemptions.
All right. Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. We're gonna patch you in.
And Madam Chair, just for the record and for everyone that is here this evening, we do have Mr. Volkey and Ms. Lacy on phone conference participating in the meeting this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey, you are on.
Thank you, Ms. Corby. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3, here, appearing as a voice from the beyond. With that, we are on Bill 9921 again, and we have amended this bill extensively. It has been through work session, and I assume the administration is there and will be able to speak on it as well. But I think it is ready for final vote at this point. Just a quick recap on this bill. The purpose is to cut back on some degree of red tape that exists in the county code for relatively small improvements, either to commercial and now to residential property. So with that, I would ask all my colleagues to vote favorably, and I appreciate all of the time and effort that's been put into this bill, both by the council, but more particularly by the administration and the work that's been done by those in planning and zoning and inspections and permits, as well as the county executive staff for working with me on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Mr. Barron from the administration, would you like to respond?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good to see everybody and hear disembodied voices from the beyond. Pete Barron with the administration. Sitting at the table with me is our IMP Director, Mark Wienermeyer, our OPZ Director, Steve Kaisigler, Lynn Miller from OPZ, and Kelly Kenny. We also have our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Lori Rhodes, here, if there are any questions. But as Councilman Volkey mentioned, this bill has been through the wringer a bit. Administration is supportive of the language, appreciate all the work that has gone in. As was noted, we worked with the sponsor to ensure that this bill worked as advertised. Often, these seemingly straightforward bills end up being a little more complex than initially advertised. So we support. Happy to answer any questions. Look forward to signing the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just had one question that came from a constituent. It's my understanding that historically you use a modification process for this, and obviously, there's been language changes in the bill specifically as a result of that word change, but several times, there's been kind of this process that's been discussed about how this will work in making sure that these projects move forward with the process and that this process might get developed. Does planning and zoning have any picture that I might be able to describe to a constituent who's asking what that process might look like?
Pete Barron with the administration. I'll let OPZ speak for themselves, but I think it's gonna move through a very similar process as a modification. There are, in order to qualify this, there are conditions, and so OPZ is gonna have to work to make sure that those conditions are met, and it's gonna move very similar to a mod process.
Okay. That's what I anticipated. Mr. Kaisigler, is that consistent with your?
Sure. Yes, Steve Kaisigler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Mr. Barron is correct. Obviously, with applying a new technique via code, you need a process in order to implement the new code. We have been using the modification process through a green notice over the last year or so, and our intent is, as we scoured our methods for what type of process we would want to use, I think we still need to use a process that is like a modification, but not a modification. So we'll follow that process. It won't be called a modification. And instead of the applicant having to meet the criteria for a modification, they will have to meet the criteria in this bill.
Perfect.
So we have a way to do it. It's complicated to explain, but we can achieve it.
Perfect. I just want to be able to give my constituent a heads up. Thank you so much.
Seemingly complex bills, or seemingly simple bills being complex.
All right. Seeing no additional colleagues for my questions from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 99-21, and I think I said 22 before, getting ahead of myself. 99-21 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 99-21 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. No one has signed up ahead of time. However, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 99-21 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 99-21 as amended.
Bill Number 9921, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development Exemptions.
Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 99-21 as amended.
Mr. Puske.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
And Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9921 has passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 102-21 as amended.
Bill Number 10221, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses, Adult Independent Dwelling Units, Setbacks.
Thank you. And again, this is Mr. Volkey's bill. Councilman Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. So again, this is a bill that we have worked on through a number of council meetings as well as work sessions. Appreciate the administration again working with me on this one. This is a very simple change. It will modify, or I shouldn't really say modify, basically clarify the issue of when you have an adult independent dwelling unit, what setbacks apply if there is a facility there, which sort of lot line or boundary line you're using. So this clarifies that it is the boundary line of the development. With that, I would ask that my colleagues support this bill this evening as we move forward with it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Would the administration like to respond?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration again. Sticking with me is the same team minus our IMP Director, Mr. Wienermeyer, because it's not relevant for this bill. As Councilman Volkey stated, this bill has been discussed several times. Appreciate everybody working together. Want to commend the team at OPZ for getting this bill into the right place along with the councilmen. So we support.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 102-21 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission through the online testimony tool ahead of time. It was seen by the whole council. It's been added to the record. It's included in the summary that is posted on the website.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Do we have, ah, sorry. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 102-21 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Ms. Leahy, I have your name on the list. Is that, nope. Okay. So I guess moving on. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this bill? All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 102-21 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 102-21 as amended.
Bill Number 10221, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses, Adult Independent Dwelling Units, Setbacks.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing no lights on, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 102-21 as amended.
Ms. Puske.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 10221 has been passed.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving right along, please read the title of Bill Number 103-21 as amended.
Bill Number 10321, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial Districts, Gunsmiths and Ammunition Sales Facilities.
All right. Ms. Fiedler and Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. So I don't know, Ms. Fiedler's got her light on, so it looks like she's ready to go. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this bill has gone through two rounds of amendments, and there will be another amendment offered at the appropriate time. But to summarize this bill in its amended form, it simply says, if you have an approved indoor gun range that has been approved through the special exception process, you can also have a gunsmith on site and the sale of ammunition. The gunsmith on site is really a critical safety measure. Gunsmith's primary operation of business is to repair and maintain firearms so that those who are using indoor ranges and outdoor ranges, but in this case, it's indoor range applied, are operating and using a safe firearm that has all mechanisms intact, operating safely. There's no wear or tear that would compromise the safety of the firearm. So it's, in my opinion, critical that we allow these gunsmiths to be able to operate at our indoor ranges, which we only have one in C-3, and that's what this bill applies to. So at the appropriate time, I will introduce an amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Administration, if you would like to respond?
Pete Barron with the administration, same gang sticking around. I think we've discussed this bill several times. The administration has seen the amendment that's forthcoming, and it makes the bill better.
All right. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 103-21 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony ahead of time. The whole council has seen that. It was added to the record, and it also is included in the summary that is posted online.
All right. Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 103-21 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. All right. We did have one person sign up, but I'm guessing maybe, Ms. Leahy, somehow your name has come up.
I will wait till next, next meeting, I'm gonna go.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 103-21 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 103-21 as amended.
Bill Number 10321, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial Districts, Gunsmiths and Ammunition Sales Facilities.
There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3. This amendment requires gunsmiths engaged in repairing or making firearms to obtain all permits and licenses required by law.
All right. Ms. Fiedler, as the sponsor of this amendment, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I think the summary read by Ms. Corby was great. I think it's important to note in the amendment, when we're talking about what gunsmiths are engaged in, there's a very brief listing of the jobs that gunsmiths do. And I think of, you know, if you're looking at a food package, you see the most important and prominent ingredient in a package first. Well, the most important and used component of being a gunsmith is repairing and maintaining firearms. So that is listed first, as is the common definition, if you will, although there's not, excuse me, a clear definition at the not, excuse me, a clear definition at the state or federal level. But this helps to give the general public and anyone reading the code an idea of what gunsmiths do. And I urge my colleagues to support this amendment tonight.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Second?
Fiedler, second.
And is there any discussion among my colleagues? All right. Mr. Barron, does the administration, I guess you already, but go ahead.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, we're good.
All right. Seeing no, oh, yes, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Sarah Lacy, District 1. Just one quick question for the sponsor. I'm not sure if I just couldn't hear, but why does, why, Miss amendment, would you include the requirement that the gunsmith shall obtain all required licenses and permits required by law? When, isn't all of that superfluous language?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler, go ahead.
Yeah. This is required by federal and state law, so to the degree that it's not necessarily, necessary, you are accurate, Ms. Lacy. I think that there were some members of the public that wanted the language in the code and in the bill, just for further clarity.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions from my colleagues? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Ms. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment, the amendment to 103-21 has been adopted.
All right. Bill Number 103-21 as amended will be heard on February 7, 2022. So that's our very next meeting, just to draw attention to that. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 104-21.
Bill Number 104-21, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: School Bus Facilities.
All right. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this bill, we've discussed it two work sessions ago, and we've discussed it several council meetings. I think it's pretty self-explanatory at this point. I will have an amendment at the appropriate time, and I ask for your support of the amendment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Administration, if you'd like to respond?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Want to thank the council for organizing all the bills so that I have the same group at the table once again. As the council, as the administration noted to the council in the work sessions and previous meetings, we've had several concerns with this bill. We have seen Councilwoman Fiedler's amendment that will be coming up, and we're getting closer and making the bill better, so.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 104-21 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
All right. Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 104-21 as amended. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I believe we had no one signed up ahead of time. But if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. All right. Again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 104-21 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 104-21 as amended.
Bill Number 104-21, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: School Bus Facilities.
All right. There are two amendments today. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment requires a school bus facility as a conditional use in a C3 commercial district to be on a lot of at least one acre.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this was actually brought to our attention by Ms. Miller, who was reviewing the legislation, and the conditional use and having commercial or industrial on Page 4 in Line 11 was a conflict. So this is really just a cleanup, although not technical, and I ask for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Fiedler. Is there a motion to adopt?
Fiedler, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
All right. Is there any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just have one question, and Ms. Miller, I think this is for you. Do I understand this correctly, because the language on that page in Page 4 is not necessary because it's permitted in industrial uses as opposed to conditional, but the conditional use is C3?
Yes, that's correct. Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you.
All right. Administration, would you like to respond?
We're good.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, hearing nothing from the voices of beyond, Madam Secretary, please read, oh, I'm sorry, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 2 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read Amendment Number 3.
Amendment Number 3. This amendment removes school bus facilities as a conditional use in small business districts.
All right. Ms. Fiedler, again, you're the sponsor. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So this amendment is pretty self-explanatory. I think it gets the bus closer to pulling into the school building or in front of it.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, so moved.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Any discussion? Mr. Barron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. As Councilwoman Fiedler stated, this gets us a lot closer. This was one of the major concerns the administration had.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Ms. Puski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
All right. Bill Number 104-21 as amended will be heard on February 7, 2022. All right. Moving on to one more, at least one more bill from the last calendar year. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 113-21.
Bill Number 113-21, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
All right. Are there any questions from, oh, no, this is, I'm sorry, this is an admin bill. Admin, you may have the floor first.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Joining the all-star team at the table is Greg Stewart from Our Schools. We still have Steve Keizegler and Lynn Miller from OPZ, Ms. Kenny from Office of Law, and Ms. Lori Rhodes, our DCAO for land use. As we discussed at the January 11th work session, Bill 113-21 approves the 2023 school utilization chart based on projected enrollment rates in the, in the coming years. As you recall, we passed 8521 last year, which continued the current levels of the school chart. Schools are determined opened or closed for adequate public facilities purposes based on whether they reach certain percentage, a certain percentage of their state-rated capacities. That's 95% for elementary and middle schools, 100% for high schools. We will continue to work with OPZ, the Board of Education, to address the APF and educational needs of our county. The folks here at the table can ask, answer any specific questions that may come up. But I think Councilwoman Pickard mentioned at the previous work session, there had been some suggestions to update the look of the chart to make it, help make it easier to understand for members of the public and laypeople like me. And so you'll note that this chart has additional information in it, which hopefully benefits everybody as they're looking at it.
I actually wanted to comment on that and say I appreciate the, the format, so you can kind of get the data in two different, you know, by cluster and by the level, elementary, middle, and high. It's very helpful. Any questions from my colleagues? Oh, we've got one from the beyond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3, and thank you, Ms. Corby. My question is one that I ask sort of every year at this time when we have the school utilization chart. But in this particular instance, what I'm curious about is with the APF work group on schools, and I may have missed this if it came up at the work session, so I apologize, when do we expect that we will see legislation or any changes from them on how we are calculating school capacity? Do we have any update there?
Pete Barron with the administration.
Go ahead.
I'll let Mr. Keizegler field that one, but the work is ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Steve Keizegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. We actually just had our 10th or 11th, I believe, school APF work group meeting last week. And every time we meet, we, we find ourselves updating the timeline of our projected finish with the project. The reality is, we just completed, I'm going to say, for the most part, data collection. Now we move on to developing what I'm going to say is concepts for the work group to consider that would be a different, at least one of the options would be a very different form of school APF and how it's calculated. We're anticipating not being able to complete that work, which involves both legislation and potentially changes to taxing and fees and how we fund the capital end of school construction before July, the mid-July, which means that we really can't get any legislation in, in this next calendar year. It would likely be afterwards, but shortly after the next calendar year. That's the plan.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Just a follow-up on that a little bit, because I do remember we spoke about this last, during the last school utilization chart. Have there been any concrete kind of suggestions or thoughts about ways we might even tweak it in the interim, leaving aside all of the other kind of big picture items you just mentioned about funding school construction and things like that? It does seem like this is one isolated piece that work group might be able to take in a chunk by itself, because we're, if I look at this particular bill in my district, I've got schools moving around both directions, opening, closing, et cetera. And sometimes they're opening, but there's only a few seats available. Sometimes they're, it just seems like we don't, if we don't have a good plan in place, it's hard every year, I think we've all asked about this every year, to come back and just hear that the timeline's pushing out. Is there any way we can try and fast-track just this piece of it?
Steve Keizegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I'm not sure what that would mean. What we're intending to give the work group is probably three options. One, do we like the system we have, and do we want to stick with it? It's probably going to be a resounding no. Is there a way to make more modest changes in the system we have? That's the second option. And the third option would look more like what Montgomery County has done. And we have staff from their agencies in Montgomery County assisting us with our efforts. But I don't know that there's a quick fix to the way that we do school, school APF. There are, you touch one thing, and it touches five other things, which touch 10 other things. And I'm afraid if we went off in that direction, we would never achieve what we're actually trying to achieve, which is functionally a different way of doing this than we're doing it. So I don't, I don't know what a quick fix would be, frankly.
But do I understand correctly that we haven't looked at any concrete fixes yet? We're just still data collecting?
We have, we have finished data collection. I don't believe there's a consensus, and I would ask Councilwoman Pickard if she has any thoughts, because she's in the work group. I don't think that we are talking about quick fixes that would have any value. I think in, in all of my discussions, what, where I would come back to is there's a, a sense of how we do the work that we do, the fact that we have a very large number of vacant seats, that without other changes, the only way to affect that in the system is through a fairly large redistricting, which we all know politically and socially is so difficult to do, and even that takes a significant amount of time. Mr. Stewart can tell you that they're embarking on what would be, they're hiring a consultant to assist them with a very major redistricting effort. But I don't have a quick fix for this. We, we spent almost 40 years in this system, and there isn't like if you touch this thing here or that thing there, that it's going to have meaningful impact in how we do this. That I think would be, let me, let me preface that. That would be acceptable, one, to the various parties in the group, but also from a legislative standpoint, I'm not sure that there would be support to do it, because every time you push in one place, it pushes back in another. I wish it was simpler.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just ask everyone, tonight's not the night to be quiet and shy, so speak up and speak clearly and talk into your microphone so we can help the council members who are from afar hear clearly.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I think that my question is going to be for Mr. Stewart, and this is more of confirmation of understanding why there's frustration across the board on the current method. I have heard from a number of Severna Park residents with Severna Park Middle School opening up in this chart. And the way that I have described it is that this is not and has never been a, a real-time method for predicting or calculating that. It, it's more of a, an estimate based on the formula provided, and that formula for this chart means that the certified enrollment numbers from September of 2020 are used with the projected enrollment from the 2021 Board State Approved Educational Facilities Master Plan that then calculates the open seats in any given school. Is that, did I get the right years and certification dates?
Greg Stewart, Senior Manager, Planning for Public Schools. Yes. The Educational Facility Master Plan is based on the prior year's information. So because this is all based on the 21 master plan, that's based on the actual enrollment that was audited and certified from that September 30 of 2020. We're in the process right now of, of collecting data for the upcoming '22 master plan, which we're required under state law to provide every year to the state by July 1. So realistically, I know there's been issues of timing on when this chart basically gets introduced. There's always a question of, can we have it done sooner? You know, when we develop that master plan, we're printing, or print, it's basically going to the Board of Education in June for approval. It then goes to the state. We're ready to provide a open-closed chart. Immediately after that, we can provide it to Planning and Zoning. So at least the data's a little closer to that, that data, you know, that timeline. Because right now, like you said, this is, you know, a year and a half almost from that original data set. The one thing to keep in mind, you know, we update this every single year, and we base it on the best available information that we have at the time. So, you know, as corrections occur, like, again, I'm going to revise, all these numbers are going to be revised again in, in June, July. And so we're going to revisit this again. We do it every year. so we're going to revisit this again. We do it every year. And then, yes, there is a delay, but again, you have to understand this is a very large document. There's a lot of schools. We're looking at tenure projections, you know, looking at every grade, every grade level for every school. And the thing you have to understand is, you know, everybody's, you know, when you have kids, they're only in school for 12 years. If they moved out, you know, your numbers ebb and flow. So it constantly happens throughout the county, whether it's just that if the child, you know, that goes 12 years that they're in school, other times people move, or they move in. I mean, either way, there's a lot of dynamics that happen, and of course, you throw in a pandemic, it changes a lot more. So we do it, do the best we can with it.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just a follow-up comment.
Go ahead.
I really do appreciate you confirming that I calculated the right dates and such. So I think that that is the underlying frustration in the community, is that I could have a student in a school that in real time I know is over capacity, but we won't feel the impact of real-time data until that year's enrollment is certified a year and a half later.
Well, hopefully, we can do it quicker than the year and a half, if we can get the chart to you sooner. Just to give you a little, you know, we, some of these schools, to give you an idea, Rundle, I think it was like a Rundle Middle and Mead Middle, since the certification back in September, we've added one school, got 29 new students, the other one got 30. Constantly, these students are, you know, either enrolling or basically moving on. So it's not something, it's, you've got to take a snapshot, but it's, it's changing every single day. We've got about 85,000 students, and you can imagine the movement, you know, that happens in this county. It's very dynamic.
Thank you. I see we have a flag from afar.
I believe it has been withdrawn.
Ah, okay. Then Councilwoman Hare.
Just to touch on that for a second, you just mentioned that we're using the basis of this is their certified enrollment data from 2020, which of course, we saw a pretty big dip in enrollment that September for students in the county schools. And so my question is, do you know how many students have since re-enrolled in the school? I know you just mentioned 29 and 30 in two different schools there. Do you know how many students have re-enrolled in the county school since that time that would not be reflected in this data because we're using September 2020 data?
There we go. Greg Stewart, Senior Manager, Planning. We lost roughly about 3,000 students. We probably gained back about half of those. We continue to see, you know, students enrolling. You know, again, when, when COVID hit, you know, my discussions with both the State of Maryland, Department of Planning, along with other LEAs around the state of Maryland, we all, we all saw it, you know, basically, we all had our projections going, and then all of a sudden, COVID dropped, everybody across the state, everything dropped. We all made assumptions, best guesses. We all figured it was going to return to that same line, and it didn't. And part of that was Deltas, Omnicron, there's all these things that have happened that we didn't get their total return, you know. So, you know, again, we're looking two years out. We're hoping by then, we get the students back. And again, this is, we're in uncharted territory. We have never had a pandemic like this before. So we're going to see, again, the numbers that we're working on now. We don't believe we're going to have that full return. We may have, say, another half of that back. We're not seeing, we don't believe there's going to be the full return that we lost. So we'll make that a new correction with the new Master Plan.
Okay, but so those 1,500 students or so who have come back, they, they're not accounted for in this certified data, because the certified data is 2020?
That's correct. And again, like I said, the data is changing constantly, so.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Thank you. My favorite. My favorite topic is school APF. We've spent many, many, many hours in the school APF work session, so I'm not exactly sure, Ms. Hare, what a quick fix you'd be looking for. Right now, we close schools when they're 95, you know, elementary and middle at 95% capacity and high schools at 100% capacity. That's very different from our larger county neighbors and how they calculate school APF. We're very, very conservative in this county as how we utilize school APF. We also have currently going on the work group, I think for maybe the first time in Anaronda County history, the deep dive, I don't know, it's hard if you haven't dug through some of the documents that we're looking at, it's hard to really tell. It's hard to explain the level of data analysis that's been happening, and some of it is counterintuitive to what people think is driving school enrollment in this county. We can see student yield at its highest points in communities that are not seeing development. It's from generational turnover of neighborhoods, and how you account for that in a school APF policy is very, very challenging, because we can't, unless we go, and maybe the, oh gosh, I don't want to add another data point, so let me just stop right there. Oh, the census. You know, we're seeing neighborhoods in the northern part of the county having pretty serious generational turnover. New, young families are taking over. We're seeing it in, in spots all over the county. Plus, the school system, like we talked about, is in the middle of probably one of the largest redistricting that's happened in a long time, maybe ever, and that process is kicking off at the same time as we're doing this, which is going to shift and groove the policy too, when we see how we redistrict and how we, again, utilize our current school buildings. So I don't know if there's anything different we could be doing in the interim. One, one thing, if I, if I can steal some Board of Education thunder, at the legislative, the school board legislative breakfast, it was revealed that their policy committee is going to be tackling a policy about looking at redistricting, and maybe it's a census every 10 years. They're going to be looking at some trigger points that are going to launch potentially redistricting. They're looking at tackling a policy like that within the school board, which is also something the school system has, the county's never really done before. So there's lots of moving parts as we do this work. We also talked at our last school APF meeting, and it's something I'm really interested in, is starting to bring some of this data to our work sessions, so that we can start informing the council about the data analysis that's happening, and while informing the council, also informing the public. Because there are probably in really taking a hard, if we're really, really interested in improving our school APF policy, which also informs capital budgets and everything else, and residential development and all these things we need to tackle, we're going to have to tackle some of the myths that are out there in, in the county, in the political narrative, in the community narrative about schools and school overcrowding. So possibly in the next couple of months, we may see some presentations at a work session to talk, start really talking openly about the data that's coming out. It's very challenging work. I don't, I wish there was a magic wand and we could just fix it, but it's going to be really hard. It's going to be hard work, and we're going to have to dig deep. So get ready.
Thank you, Ms. Pickard. I'm just going to jump in. I just saw your lights. I'll get you next. But this is actually not as much of a concern with APF as it is with redistricting, and so really, this is more just a comment and maybe something to carry back to the Board of Ed. I am very concerned about the equity issues created by having, at one end of the spectrum, obviously, Old Mill is like in the process of being resolved, but 113% of its school utilization, and then having Chesapeake High at 70%. So we've got like a 43% difference. And like I said, Old Mill is going to be resolved shortly because of the, you know, the new high school, but even that's going to take a little time. And then we've got, you know, let's see, Annapolis at 110%, North County at 108%, and then a couple others that are over 100. And I really just worry about, you know, by not resolving those through redistricting, are we letting those equity issues fester? I realize that, you know, the number of students in a school is not the same as the number of students in each classroom, and that teachers are, you know, are allotted accordingly. But, you know, more kids in the building, you know, they bump into each other more. It just, you know, it, more stuff happens. I'll tell you from my personal experience as a teacher, working in schools that are, well, actually, most of the ones I've worked in are overcrowded, because that's the way things are these days. But it does make a difference. You know, I've worked at a Rundle for a few years, and I've seen it grow significantly from the days when, you know, kids could get through the hallways easily to, it's like a, I don't even know, it's like a, it's like cattle, you know, getting down the hallways because it's crowded. So again, not necessarily addressable through APF per se, but I just see the urgency of redistricting, and I'm really encouraged to hear that you've got a consultant coming down to work on that, and I hope that that's something that, you know, we can do as quickly as possible, because that, that is a real, that is a real equity issue in my mind. So I see some other lights, and I will let my colleagues have the floor. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to respond to two things really quickly from Councilwoman Pickard. On the first, I never said a quick fix. Those were not my words. I believe Mr. Kai Ziegler used those words. I'm just asking for whether or not there was any kind of way to separate out pieces of this, if possible, during this process, instead of combining everything like school funding with how do we calculate students in school, to see if there's possible incremental changes that can be made along the way. To that end, I love the idea of bringing some of the data to a work session, because I think it would be incredibly helpful for me personally, and probably also the public, to understand some of the data that you're going through, and give us a better glimpse into all the work that the work group is doing. So I'm fully supportive of that and appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Pusky.
Thank you. Very interesting discussion. I feel like déjà vu, because I've been sitting on the council for eight years, and I hear the same thing over and over again. And I just want to remind my colleagues that we're not the Board of Education. We are the county council, and I know sometimes we do have to cross policy, because we have to make decisions. But I think one thing that's important, there are decisions that the school board, and now elected, by the way, that could make to move people to Southern and Chesapeake. They could add an IB program, like they did at Mead High School in the district that I serve. They could add a teacher prep program. We need teachers right now. So there are things that can be done, but those are difficult decisions that the board has to make. I do like the idea, though, of educating ourselves about the process, but to be clear, redistricting is not this county council. Redistricting for county council maps is for our district. That's one thing, but as far as the school board, and I know it gets frustrating sometimes, because we are trying to all solve this together. It's something that I think everybody, regardless of where you live in the county, really want to make a difference, and that's why we're asking the questions. So I wholly agree with that, but I do want to be careful, though, about the board has to take action. And we've said this over and over again, because they set where those school boundaries sit. They set a lot of these policies, and certainly bringing the map forward earlier, I think is very helpful, because that allows the council, from a development perspective, I'm sure Mr. Kai Ziegler would agree with this, to make, you know, some of those decisions as far as the region plans, where we're putting things forward. But as far as what school gets what students or other things like that, again, that's why we have an elected board or even prior, and it's, it's very difficult to set up here and try and, you know, come up with every, every solutions. But I like Ms. Hare's idea and Ms. Pickard about bringing the data, but again, I just want to put it in the lens that we need to be careful. The council can only do so much, and I appreciate the work group, because I've had these discussions with Mr. Kai Ziegler, and they're not easy. I know I talked to several colleagues that was at a Mako Conference, and we were discussing the APF issue, trying to figure out EDUs, trying to figure out, like, where certain fees would go, what pays for schools. I mean, the legislation alone, again, I think it was kind of articulated here, it's a heavy lift. And I think what you need to decide is, first of all, what's the calculation? So start there. Then you can work your way back, how are you going to pay for it? Because this is what it comes down to, right? It's either numbers and money and fees in terms of how it fits. And again, it's very complicated. I appreciate the work that you're doing. I know that we have to keep working, but again, thank you to my colleagues for trying to get there, but I just, again, it's not a criticism, but I think we need to remind ourselves what our roles are, and I'm hoping the board can continue to step up as we have these elected leaders and take some accountability and responsibility, just like we have to. We have to take tough votes. They got to, you know, start pushing things and moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fieder, District 5. I just want to add my voice to those supporting bringing some data to the work session. I think that is one of the biggest frustrations in the 5th District from residents when they see a school opening, and my response is, well, there's a work group, and there will be a fix at some point in the future, but not being able to provide details, data points, this is where we are in the timeline, I think just further frustrates residents. So that would be extremely helpful, and I look forward to seeing that in a future work session.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I brought this forward in our work session, but I think as we work as a council to look at our school APF policy, what we need to be helping communicate to our communities, and I think if you were to look at this chart, you can see it better. It tells the story better, and the story it tells is every feeder, for the most part, has a couple elementary schools that are closed, but a lot of elementary schools that are open. So when families are concerned that their school is at 109%, they also have six other elementary schools that are at 75, 85%, and they're making a choice to resist a Board of Education redistricting, and we can't, as a council and as an administration, fund million-dollar school construction projects because we are choosing not to redistrict. So this is where we have to have some vertical leadership, and the Board of Education, and the county council, and the state, because the state IAC is starting to, they've always had something to say about school capacity, when they're talking about how much of our schools they're going to fund, school construction they're going to fund. They're getting even more serious about that. So all three levels of government here are going to have to be working on this problem together. That's why I like the way this chart looks, for, not for us as a public body, to help analyze this, but also to tell the story of what's happening in our schools.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Seeing no more lights, Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission of testimony. It went to the entire council. It's been added to the record. It's included in the summary that is posted on our website.
All right. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 113-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. No one had signed up in advance, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table now. And once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 113-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 113-21.
Bill Number 113-21, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart.
Any further discussion?
I'm just going to throw in one last. I hope, I wanted to be clear that I didn't intend to shoot the messenger there. I know you're, you're presenting the data and answering questions about the data, not about redistricting. So I didn't want to, I just wanted to clarify. That was, I guess I'm, that's to the Board of Ed. Fix that. I know, I know it's a lot of work. Okay. Anyway, so I guess if that was the, I was the last comment. So let's see. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 113-21.
Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 113-21 has been passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 114-21. We had a lot of bills in 2021.
Yes, we did. Bill Number 114-21, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Charges, and Assessments: Late Penalties.
All right. This is an admin bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Making sure I got everybody. Yep. We have Karen Henry and Kim Clooney from DPW, Karen McQuade and Billy Pennley from Finance, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We discussed this bill at the work session. Just to remind the council, 114-21 grants the controller the authority to waive late fees on utility bills in the case of widespread payment delays as the result of a state of emergency, billing error, postal service delays, or other major event outside the customer's control. Under the current code language, a late fee is imposed once the due date is passed. The controller may waive, under current code, this fee twice a year under the customer's request. This bill allows the controller to waive the fee, waive that fee under those circumstances in a more flexible manner. As noted in, in the auditor's blue letter, we are codifying in this bill several important practices, but we do not have, we do not currently have the flexibility to do everything that this bill allows, and we appreciate the council's support to grant this flexibility. So you may recall from the work session, there was some discussion about the use of the word "may" regarding the controller's authority to waive late fees when it's at the county's, when the county's at fault. You will see an amendment on this bill and an amendment on the next bill, turning that "may" to a "shall," and those will be discussed or introduced at the appropriate time. But hope you like this bill.
Are there any questions for my colleagues? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 114-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission ahead of time. It was sent to the whole It was sent to the whole council. It's been added to the record. It's also included in the summary that is posted on our website.
All right. Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 114-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes, noting that we did not have anyone signed up ahead of time. If anyone here wishes to testify, now would be the time to come up to the table. Seeing once again no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 114-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 114-21.
Bill Number 114-21: An Ordinance Concerning Public Works, Utilities, Charges, and Assessments: Late Penalties.
Madam Secretary, we have an amendment, yes? There's one amendment?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment requires the waiver of a penalty charge when there is a county error.
All right. And again, Mr. Barron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. This came up in the discussion during the work session. Just to be clear, the county would always waive this fee, but we're comfortable with the "shall" language to lock it in. So hopefully you'll support the amendment.
All right. Is there, oh, gosh, I think everyone wants to adopt this. Okay, so I'm just going to go, Ms. Hare.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Councilman Pusky, second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I do have one question. I'm super excited to see this amendment. Obviously, we discussed it at the work session. But I do remember, Mr. Barron, you mentioned you wanted to make sure there was no concern on the administration side from Office of Finance or something, that this was going to create some kind of headache. So I just want to confirm that that's in.
No headaches.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Oh, Ms. Fiedler. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Just in practice, where, when there is an error, is it typically caught after billing is sent out or prior to?
I defer that to one of the experts at the table. It probably depends on the error.
Karen McQuaid, Office of Finance. Yeah, it would depend on the error. Of course, we look, you know, to make sure that we don't make errors, but if we would find one, then we would correct it.
Madam Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So if you were to catch it after sending billing out and payment was received, I would assume then a refund would be issued?
Yes, we would credit the account.
Great, thank you.
Karen McQuaid.
All right. Any additional, seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1. Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 114-21, as amended, will be heard on February 7, 2022. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 115-21.
Bill Number 115-21: An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real and Personal Property Taxes, Late Interest, and Penalties.
All right. Another admin. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Sticking with me is our Office of Finance, Ms. McQuaid and Ms. Penley, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Same basic testimony as the last bill, except now we're dealing with real and personal property taxes. Same issue. Need the additional flexibility to waive the fees. As the auditor's blue letter noted, we're codifying several practices that we are able to do. However, this bill grants us some additional flexibility for some things we aren't. And we'll have a similar "shall" amendment that I hope you will adopt.
All right. Seeing no questions, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 115-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission ahead of time. It also went to the entire council. It's been added to the record and is included in the summary that is posted on the website.
All right. Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 115-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes, noting that there was no one who signed up ahead of time. If there is anyone who here who wishes to speak, now is the time to come down to the table, state your name and address for the record. I'm always hopeful someone will, no, it's all right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 115-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 115-21.
Bill Number 115-21: An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Real and Personal Property Taxes, Late Interest, and Penalties.
All right. And there is one amendment on this bill as well. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment requires the waiver of interest and penalties when there is a county error.
Mr. Barron.
Same as the previous bill, probably the same amendment, just changes to "shall" if there is a county error. And anticipating the question, Councilwoman Hare, no headaches.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Hare, motion to adopt.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1. Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 115-21, as amended, will be heard on February 7, 2022. All right. Moving on. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 116-21.
Bill Number 116-21: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: Nonconforming Uses, Termination.
All right. Mr. Barron, this is another admin bill. You have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me is Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Mr. Kaisziger, our OPZ Officer, Ms. Lynn Miller from OPZ, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Again, this was another bill we discussed at the work session. Bill 116-21 updates language regarding nonconforming uses within our zoning code. The purpose of this bill is to provide for a longer period of time that will not be counted when determining that a nonconforming use or structure that is damaged may be repaired, reconstructed, or relocated, provided that the nonconforming status of the property does not result in a greater nonconformance than previously enjoyed, and that it is located on the lot that it was originally located. We do have one amendment which we'll address at the appropriate time to help clarify some language in the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any questions from my colleagues? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 116-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right. In that case, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 116-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Again, no one signed up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come down to the table, state your name and address. And again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 116-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 116-21.
Bill Number 116-21: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning: Nonconforming Uses, Termination.
And there is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment provides for the reconstruction, repair, or relocation of a nonconforming structure in certain situations, and provides that the Office of Planning and Zoning may allow the registration and use of nonconforming dwellings in certain situations.
And, Mr. Barron, this is an admin amendment. You have the floor.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. We mentioned at the work session, we were working on some language to clarify regarding repair of nonconforming uses to ensure that the property owner won't come under any greater regulatory burden for making repairs on existing structures. We're more than happy to answer any questions you may have. It's a long amendment, but it accomplishes a pretty straightforward task.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Councilwoman Pusky.
Second.
Fiedler, second. Is there any discussion?
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1. Ms. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 116-21, as amended, will be heard on February 7, 2022. All right. Wow, I didn't realize we went all the way, yeah, we did. 117, 118. Was that the last one? 118. We had 118 bills. All right, sorry. Don't ever say county government is boring. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 117-21.
Bill Number 117-21: An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Commercial Revitalization Area Program.
Mr. Barron, this is another administration bill.
Yep. Coming back up to the table is Ms. McQuaid and Ms. Penley from Finance. Mr. Kaisziger and Ms. Miller are sticking around. We also have Kelly Kenny, who's been hanging out at the far end of the table all night. So this was previously discussed as well. I want to thank Councilwoman Pickard for working with the administration to do this. Bill 117-21 extends the expiration date of the Commercial Revitalization Area Program through April 2032. To remind the council, this is an existing tax credit that has been around and renewed. It was established in 2001, renewed in '06, in '12, in '17, and we're pushing it out 10 years with Bill 117-21. It provides some important incentives, and we'd like to keep them around. Hopefully, you'll pass the bill tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions? Ms. Pickard.
I just want to.
You can go ahead.
Convince my colleagues to, I don't think I need to convince anybody. This should be an easy vote tonight. But we want to keep these incentives in place for the various commercial revitalization areas that are around the county, if not, and actually work to maybe expand them. But for now, we need to at least keep these extended. Thank you.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 117-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything.
All right. Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 117-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes, noting again, no one had signed up ahead of time to testify. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 117-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the bill, the title of Bill Number 117-21.
Bill Number 117-21: An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Commercial Revitalization Area Program.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 117-21. Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 117-21 has passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill Number 118-21.
The very last bill of 2021. Bill Number 118-21: An Ordinance Concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District.
All right. Mr. Barron, this is another administration bill. You have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just Kelly Kenny with me at the table for this one. Bill 118-21 was also discussed at our last work session, but to remind the council, 118-21 modifies the purpose of the Sherwood Forest SCBD to add roads and solid waste collection as allowable expenses. The change comes after residents of the SCBD voted in favor of the addition. The real cost of roads and solid waste collection will be assessed upon the community through the special community benefit assessment. Any administrative costs will be offset through the administrative fee charged, any accounting costs will be offset by those fees charged. We ask that you support at the appropriate time.
Any questions from my colleagues? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 118-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything ahead of time.
All right. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 118-21. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And it seems that the one person who had signed up will not be here, unfortunately. But if there is anyone else who is in the audience who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no motion in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 118-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 118-21.
Bill Number 118-21: An Ordinance Concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Kenny, did they meet the required thresholds that they had to? I assume since the bill's in front of us.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I'm assuming that they did. I don't, I'm covering this bill for Ms. Lori Blair-Klasmyer, but I'm assuming that the bill would not have come down if they did not.
Okay, perfect. That's great. Thank you.
And, Councilwoman Hare, in the auditor's blue letter, there is some details on it. They did.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 118-21. Mr. Pusky.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 118-21 has been passed.
All right, and we have one resolution for consideration tonight. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 64-21.
Resolution number 64-21: Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Require the Anarundel County Veterans Affairs Commission.
Mr. Tepuski, this is your resolution. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For about 20 years, I've been involved in veterans' issues. The Retired and List Association has had their president live in my district. There's been many other organizations that we've helped in even prior legislation, including the waiver of fees for nonprofits, military organizations, so they didn't have to pay for water hookups, so they can serve our members. I think there was a little confusion on this bill, and I want to clarify a couple of things so you understand the impetus, and also hopefully the purpose. Article 3, Section 12A actually defines the Veteran Affairs Committee, but a future council or county executive could remove that committee. And so essentially, the reason why I'm bringing this forward, just like I brought the Human Relations Commission forward, is I believe that actually this should be a part of our charter. And the reason why is because Anarundel County actually has the second-most veteran population in the state of Maryland, besides Prince George's County. We also have Fort Meade, which is the largest employer. We have the Naval Academy. I'm not going to go through every single list of military installations, but to me, a charter defines what you stand for. In particular, I think in Anarundel County, veterans' issues should be raised to the top as terms of priority. I know the Administration, and I want to thank them, but also the Veteran Affairs Committee members, for the service hotline, which by the way is 410-222-3500, where if you ever need anything in regards to housing, unemployment, questions related to services, that number is there, and that's been a huge asset to many people in our community. The other day, I had someone who was having an issue with their TRICARE healthcare situation regarding COVID, and they were able to reach out to the hotline and get support. So this is just some examples of where it's there. But this charter amendment will go in front of the voters if my colleagues pass it. It doesn't change the bylaws, the membership. It doesn't get into whether or not there should be, you know, the composition and who should serve on the committee. It just solidifies that there should be a committee. And I think it's a statement, and I ask my colleagues to do that. Mr. Toodle, who was supposed to come and present tonight, lives in Severna Park. He actually served on the Veterans Affairs Committee. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He sent an email to me. I did forward it to you all, and it explains his support, along with others, you know, through this. So again, I ask that everyone, for the sake of the veterans that live in our community, again, this is simply a codifying piece that we do as a part of our charter. I think it sends a statement that veterans' issue are a priority and should remain a priority as far as the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tepuski. Mr. Barron, would the Administration like to respond?
Happy to. I want to thank the sponsor for bringing this forward. The Administration strongly supports this effort. Agree with, and will sign on to many of the comments made by Mr. Tepuski. The Administration has long supported our county's veterans and has worked with the Council to ensure our Veterans Affairs Commission is well-equipped to address the needs of our county veterans. We have a liaison on staff who helps. We have the hotline, as was mentioned. We believe it is our responsibility to serve those who served. I will note, the Veterans Affairs Commission reached out to the Administration. I don't believe they made the deadline to submit testimony, but I promised that I would express their support on their behalf to the Council. So the Veterans Affairs Commission supports this as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions, but I think this one is an easy one. Let's put it in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions from the Council? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution number 64-21. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
I did not receive any testimony ahead of time from members of the public. I'm sorry.
All right, we will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We did have Mr. Toodle signed up, but he's obviously not going to be here, but I see, I do see motion in the audience. So if you would like to speak on this resolution, come on down, have a seat at the table, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live on Huntwood Drive in Gambrels. I'm here to briefly throw my full support for this resolution and the raising of the status and embedding it into the county charter, subject, of course, to the laws and the codes of the county council governing this commission. I do believe that this is absolutely necessary, and I wish to thank Councilwoman Tepuski wholeheartedly for all his efforts in this, all these years in supporting veterans and veterans' organizations and veterans' issues in county. We'll miss you when you leave, but I hope you do still stay involved in helping to support veterans. So I throw my full support behind this, and I urge everyone, all five votes, or hopefully all seven votes, to send this to the voters in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. All right, seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution number 64-21 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 64-21.
Resolution number 64-21: Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Require the Anarundel County Veterans Affairs Commission.
Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I just want to say for Mr. Toodle, who I would assume is watching, that I'm looking at his prepared testimony right in front of me, and thank you for your work on the commission. And to Mr. Enright, I appreciate you coming forward this evening and supporting this resolution.
All right, no additional comments from my colleagues. I'll just say personally, thanks. As an Army wife and a spouse of a veteran, I really appreciate this legislation. You know, Anarundel County is definitely, I think, you know, at least in the military world, is viewed as a place that's friendly to veterans already, so to elevate it to the charter level, I think is totally appropriate. So I appreciate this from a personal level, from the former Army friends. I know I say that I represent a Navy district, but you know, we're all one big family. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 64-21.
Ms. Tepuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution number 64-21 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And to my colleagues, is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge some unsung heroes of the county council staff who have worked tirelessly through this COVID pandemic, and again, I think worked out a pretty awesome fix to a situation for two of my colleagues tonight, so we could have the full council in session. So I wanted to say thank you. I know, we know what you do, but the public might not know what you do, and you've worked so hard over the last two years, and it has not gone unnoticed. So thank you.
And I'll just say ditto. Absolutely, thank you. I think I see nods across, and I can almost hear the nods through the telephone, if I'm not correct. So thank you from all of us, too. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Hare, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until February 7th, 2022, and that will be at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. We'll see you then. Have a good night.